Will the meeting please come to order? We've assembled for a special town meeting under a warrant issued by the Select Board on the sixth day of October 2023. Has the town been warned of the business before?
Yes.
Will the clerk please read the return of service?
Pursuant to the above warrant to me directed, I have notified and warned all inhabitants of the town of West Newbury who are qualified to vote to meet at said time and place. Constable Brian Richard dated 10/6/2023.
If there are non-voters in the hall, will you please take a seat in the first two rows on my right? We have town employees who are not residents of West Newbury who frequently have information of use to the town meeting, and it would be wise to have them speak. They include Rebecca Ombra, the Executive Assistant, James Blatchford, the Town Clerk, Sue Brown, the Town Planner, Maxwell Close, the Assistant Town Clerk, Maureen Curtin, the Assistant Assessor, Michael Dwyer, the Chief of Police and Fire Departments, Green Flaherty, the Director of the G A R Library, Michelle Green, the Conservation and Land Use Agent, Angus Jennings, the Town Manager, Sam Jocelyn, the Building Commissioner, Christian Coon, the Assessor, Mark Marlowe, Water Superintendent, Christine Marshall, Council on Aging Director, and Tim Zesson from T P Law, serving as Attorney in Castle. Is there any objection to having these individuals speak?
No.
Make the introductions. My name is Casey Swallow. I'm the moderator. I am the arbiter of the rules of debate. The Town Clerk, James Blatchford, is sitting at the end of the table next to me on my right, and the Board of Selectmen on my left, Wendy Reed, the Chair, Richard Parker, the Vice Chair, and Christopher Wild, the Clerk. The Finance Committee is seated in front of me, Rob Phillips, the Chair, Daniel Ennis, the Vice Chair, he's not with us this evening, Ross Cabalupo, Secretary, Jim Sverlikis, Timothy -- I'm sorry, wrong person, Anne O'Sullivan, and Angus Jennings, Ex officio.
Really?
Is this better?
Yes.
The rules of the meeting are as follows. The articles on the warrant constitute the agenda for the meeting. No business can be brought before the town unless it is covered by an article. The moderator reads each article, there will be more about that in a minute, and then asks for the recommendation of the Finance Committee. A motion, written if possible, must be made before any discussion can take place. A positive motion is debated, can be amended, and is voted on by voice, hand, or counted vote. A negative motion, that is a motion to take no action, can only be debated as to the desire to take action. The form of debate is that of open and free discussion. You may speak only when recognized by the moderator, and each speaker must limit his or her remarks to three minutes. The only exception to this is when we have a report from a town officer or committee, and in that case, the speaker is limited to ten minutes. There will be no personal attacks, no addressing of comments to specific individuals, no cross-examination, and all questions must be asked through the moderator and directed to the moderator. Only the moderator may ask the opinion of Town Council. Those wishing to make privileged subsidiary or incidental motions must rise in place with their hands raised. When recognized by the moderator, they may move to the closest microphone. The speaker, who is on the floor at the time, should yield the microphone for the subsidiary motion. It is our custom in West Newbury, and has been for quite some time, to discourage motions to call the question. The custom protects the rights of the minority and ensures adequate discussion. However, the moderator reserves the right to move things along, and it is here that I ask you to exercise common sense. First, please do not ask to be recognized to speak until others have had a chance to speak, and when the discussion becomes repetitive, recognize that fact and refrain from asking for the floor unnecessarily. The moderator recognizes Ms. Reed for a motion.
Madam Moderator, I move to waive the reading of articles.
Is there a second? Discussion.
Yes, the articles as written in the packet that you have in front of you, that's not the motion. That's, you know, usually the moderator reads all that, and then somebody makes a motion that's almost always identical to that, and it's unnecessary, I think, and takes a lot of time, and it's allowable for us to make that motion and not have the article read. We'd be voting on the motion as read.
Mr. Baker?
Oh, I'm going to get it.
Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. The eyes out. Under Article One, we have a report from the Affordable Housing Trust by Ms. Reed.
That was taken off. We're not doing it.
Are all of them taken off?
No, that one is removed. Sorry, you don't have--
That one's removed? Okay. We have a report from the Tree Committee, Mr. Chinai.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and thank you to the town. Because of your generous vote in the spring, we were able to inoculate 177 of our roadway ash trees in the spring and end of June, and I'm happy to report that we had 89 survive the injection, which is a very good number considering that these trees are also have been subject to problems generated by last summer's drought and that really super deep freeze we had over those four hours in, I think it was January. So they're struggling because of some climate conditions, but the injection should help. At this point, there is a follow-up study that was just posted today on the town website and our Tree Committee website, so you can see exactly the trees that made it, and there'll be further discussions about what, if anything, we need to do in the future. So thank you again for your support on that. We are going to, we plan, this is in the really idea stage right now, for next spring to have a bulk ordering of trees, and the way to get involved with this is at the forum that, FORA, that will be held on November 9th and November 15th. The Tree Committee will be there at a table, you can, we'll have a sign-up sheet, and the idea is, is that we can get trees that are larger than what you get at the nursery but are more, we're able to plant them because they come bare-rooted, and we have a really great nursery that will ship those to us. They bring them in a truck, literally, to our doorstep. So we thought that, but they're wholesale, so we want to try to get a bulk order together for next spring. There's no rush on that, we're planning, stay tuned, but if you are at the, one of those FORA, please do sign up on our sheet so we know who you are and we can contact you. There'll be more in the spring on how to join us in this effort. And finally, we have an opening on the Tree Committee for an associate member. We'd love to have you or several of you, we can create adjunct positions if you're so willing, so join us if you can, and please do check out our website, there's a whole host of information on tree care, on problems that you may have, and you can certainly contact us to get some direct help. Thank you very much, Madam Moderator.
We have a report from the Energy and Sustainability Committee, Mr. Wallace. All right, excuse me. Can you just wait a minute? I took things out of order inadvertently. I'll bring you back. All right, the first report should have been the Climate Change Committee, Mr. Parker.
Thanks. So this, late this past August, the town received a $150,000 grant for a study of climate change impacts on River Road and Lower Coffin and Bridge Streets. The primary concern is sea level rise, but this is also addressing anticipated and actually observed this year, extreme rain events. You know, there is notable erosion already along River Road, and you can expect it to get worse as sea level rise increases. So this followed a unanimous vote at the October 2022 town meeting to appropriate $50,000 in matching funds for this purpose. The proposed project consists of public activities, meetings, and outreach to inform and engage citizens and town officials, an existing condition survey, which will include bank erosion, watershed delineations, and various other factors of the areas shown susceptible to the Merrimack River flooding, a study of culverts and stormwater infrastructure, a report of vulnerabilities, ultimately, a report of vulnerabilities for the years 2030, 2050, and 2070, and finally, options for shoreline stabilization as essentially both short-term and long-term solutions. You know, there won't be a final plan at this point, but at least we'll have a sense of what we need to do to try to preserve and protect River Road going forward. The assessment will allow the town and residents to better understand the timeline and locations of future flooding and explore both interim and long-term climate adaptation strategies. It'll inform planning and consideration of alternatives to foster resiliency. So we're, the townspeople, you know, everybody here at this meeting and everybody else in town are potentially a very important part of the project. We're actually depending upon a certain amount of citizen science for feedback over the course of the next year. When people see things going on on River Road that are related to the Merrimack or to flooding events from upstream or uphill, that'll be valuable information. There'll be a considerable amount of educational info available to people, and that's going to be through various means. The library has a series of events. There'll be a town forum scheduled for November 9th, which everybody is encouraged to attend if you think it'll be interesting. There'll be a virtual event in either November or December with a little bit more in-depth information based on what's been learned at that point. There'll be a drone event, a drone-flying event in November or December, viewing the, you know, sort of capturing high-resolution video of the riverbank by the engineering firm that's doing the study so that they can, you know, get a real close view of what's already observable. And it'll be a series of interpretive signs along River Road to explain the project and to try to get participation. So, you know, this is kind of a neat project. Hopefully, we will get a fair amount out of it in terms of understanding how to deal with the climate change, specifically sea level rise impacts on River Road. You know, it's really just a first step, I think, in the town trying to understand what our vulnerabilities are to climate change. You know, this sea level rise is, it's probably more predictable, although no projections are going to be 100% accurate, but it's probably more predictable than many other impacts from climate change. We don't know what we might see next. This year, we saw, we witnessed some pretty extreme rain events. We could see storms that we haven't encountered before, you know, tropical storms or nor'easters. And, you know, hopefully, we'd never experienced any kind of extreme heat event, but, you know, we don't really know what to expect. So, you know, the town is doing what it can to try to prepare the municipality to deal with this, and, you know, I guess the takeaway that I get out of this is that each of us as individuals should look at our own resiliency, at how each of us will respond to any of the possible events that I just mentioned, and are you prepared? Thanks.
Mr. Wallace, my apologies. I'll recognize you for the report from the Energy and Sustainability.
Thank you. The Energy and Sustainability Committee works to facilitate energy efficiency and renewable energy projects in town with a focus on reducing greenhouse gas emissions and promoting a clean environment. We are working to help the town comply with Massachusetts policies to reduce emissions 50% by 2030 and 75% by 2040. In the past six months, the town has made some progress on a few projects. In June, the Select Board endorsed a municipal energy aggregation plan. This started a process that will enable the town to provide new electricity supply options for residents and businesses. Through strategic procurement, the town can stabilize electricity pricing and improve the renewable energy content of the electricity supply. We will be submitting our aggregation plan to the Department of Public Utilities soon. Approval could take a year or more. Secondly, in June, our contractor completed a second phase of upgraded controls to heating and hot water systems at the Town Office Building and Council on Aging Facility. The project was funded by a Green Communities grant, and it'll reduce heating costs in those buildings. Later in the summer, we received a screening feasibility study on possible solar projects at several town-owned properties. Now we're following up with vendors and other experts to determine whether any of the projects may be worth pursuing in the near future. Finally, the largest sources of carbon emissions in West Newbury are vehicles and space heating, water heating, and electricity use in town buildings. So we encourage everyone to think about what they can do now or in the future to convert heating systems from gas or oil to high-efficiency electricity and convert vehicles from gas or diesel to electric. Thank you.
We have a report from the Penticat School Committee, Mrs. Tra.
Hi, everyone. I'm Deena, one of the West Newbury Reps for Penticat Regional School District. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the Select Board and the Finance Committee and the Town Administrator and Moderator for their ongoing collaboration and participation in the school committee's joint session business meetings. Through ongoing communication amongst all our boards and our joint effort to get factual and timely information regarding the school budget to the community, we were able to successfully communicate with West Newbury residents our concerns as a district. The fiscal year 2022-23 Proposition Two and a Half failure created a significant shortage in staff and lost opportunities for students, also resulting in an increase to all student fees. Passing last year's 23-24 Proposition Two and a Half override while not completely getting us back to where we were resulted in making significant strides to getting our district back on track. The school committee would like to thank everyone in West Newbury and the Penticat District as a whole for their support. Each year, the school committee and superintendent set goals for what they intend to work towards and achieve in the district. Small class sizes, particularly K through 3, a strong curriculum, accessible education for all learning abilities, strong communications with the district's communities, and teacher professional development are just a few of our goals we have and will continue to address. In the past five years, we have introduced new district-wide curriculums in the subjects of math, science, English, language arts, and history. Thanks to the dedication of our staff, the work of our curriculum directors, and the hard work of our students, our most recent MCAS scores have shown significant increases in achievement. We would also like to acknowledge and congratulate West Newbury students Lily Friend and Ashley Gagnon for being named commended students in the 2024 National Merit Scholarship Program. Lily and Ashley are amongst only 34,000 students across the country to receive this distinction. The Page School opened their new ADA-compliant playground last August, and it's been a great success, the kids love it. The W N P T O held its annual apple harvest road race this past weekend, and this Saturday, October 28th, the West Newbury Laurel Grange will be hosting their annual harvest dinner, which benefits the Page School garden. We thank both organizations and the community for their hard work and support of the school. And as you've probably all seen, the new middle high school is up and running, has its new athletic fields. It's been amazing to see all the students packing the stands at the new stadium and cheering on their classmates at football, field hockey, and soccer games this fall. We look forward to a busy winter and spring as well. Students and staff are enjoying their new campus, and we continue to encourage you to take a tour if you have not already done so. Please contact the middle high school, and they will coordinate a student tour for you. And so I just want to remind the community that there are always a lot of wonderful events going on at our schools, and we invite you to attend. The middle high school theater students put on a small production of "Radium Girls" to a sell-out crowd last weekend. There will be another play this winter, as well as holiday music concerts and art shows. Our student athletes are finishing up their fall seasons now, and winter season will be kicking off after Thanksgiving. If you're interested in learning more about events at the school, please visit prsd.org and click on the direct links in the homepage, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak again, and we thank you for your continuous support.
The last report, under Article One, is from the Open Space Committee, Ms. Decker. Finance Committee, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you very much. I'll be brief. The Finance Committee met in joint session with the Select Board to review proposed warrant articles and related documents. The sponsors of each article would present their proposals and be available to discuss with the Select Board, the Town Manager, and the Finance Committee. These joint sessions are a change from past practice where separate meetings were held by the Select Board and Finance Committee. The consensus is that having one comprehensive presentation wherein all participants cover the same ground at the same time is very beneficial. Each of you can review the Finance Committee booklet for this special town meeting, which includes each warrant article and the respective Finance Committee and Select Board recommendations. I mention this just to note for you that all recommendations for tonight's meeting were approved by unanimous vote. Of course, the vote that counts is that which we make tonight, but it is of interest that there were no dissenting votes at all. Last, not on the warrant this fall is a warrant article to transfer free cash to reduce the tax rate. Such a warrant article has appeared and been approved in most every of the past several fall special town meetings. This year, it is felt that the town should pause that practice until a review of free cash and stabilization funds can be completed. Given that several large projects, such as important repairs and upgrades at Page School and a proposed new school for Whittier, may be necessary, it is felt that financial best practice includes forecasting free cash and stabilization fund balances and uses over the next several years. It is anticipated that this review will be part of next year's budget cycle in time for the annual town meeting. Thank you very much.
There will be two more reports at different, under different articles, but for now, we'll just move on to Article Two.
Bob, that's you. Article Two.
I've lost without the cue from the moderator who's up. I move that the town vote to decrease the expense line item of the fiscal year 24 Water Department budget as adopted under the motion for Article Six of the annual, the annual town meeting of April 4th, 2023 by reducing the appropriated, I mean, the approved amount to $375,027.
Second.
What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Two.
Do you wish to speak to the article?
No, it's just that we, I think we got a little ahead of ourselves on the income and the outgo, and we just need to balance things a little bit.
Is there any further discussion? Not all those, if not, all those-- Who approve, please raise your green cards. Who knows, raise your red card. The eyes out. Article Three.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to adjust the following line items as set forth in the fiscal year 2024 Town Omnibus Budget adopted under the motion for Article Four of the annual town meeting on April 24th, 2023. Number Three, Town Manager Technology Expenses increased from $70,032 to $76,455. Number Nine, Board of Registars Salary and Wages increased from $6,800 to $8,400. Number Nine, Board of Registars Expenses increased from $8,250 to $10,170. Article Twenty-Five, number twenty-five, excuse me, Board of Health Steel Landfill Monitoring increased from $36,315 to $36,915, and that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum or sums of money as may be necessary to defray the expenses of the town for fiscal year 2024.
Second. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Three, and Madam Moderator, I would ask people to, if they want some additional information while they're listening to any discussion, on page 13, there is a good graph that shows both Article Three and Article Four. Thank you.
Is there any discussion? Not all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. It's unanimous. Article Four.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to adjust the following line items as set forth in the fiscal year 2024 Town Omnibus Budget adopted under the motion for Article Four of the annual town meeting on April 24th, 2023. Twenty-One, Penticat Regional School Assessment decreased from $7,871,758 to $7,862,142. Twenty-One, Penticat Capital Assessment increased from $1,123,070 to $1,154,371. Twenty-Two, Essex North Shore Ag and Tech School increased from $46,327 to $94,110, and that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum or sums of money as may be necessary to defray the expenses of the town for fiscal year 2024.
What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Four.
Is there any discussion? Not all those, all those in favor, raise your green cards. All those opposed, raise your red cards. It's unanimous in favor. It's unanimous in favor. Article Five.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $67,514 to the Pension Liability Stabilization Fund.
Second. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Five.
Not all those in favor, raise your green cards. All those opposed, raise your red cards. Unanimous. Article Six.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 to fund the costs associated with identification and evaluation of sites with potential to support development of public wellfields, including all incidentals and related expenses, with any remaining funds to be closed out to the general account fund balance at the close of fiscal year 2025.
Any discussion? Mr. Decker?
Why is this being taken out of free cash, which affects the entire population, as opposed to the water department budget, since this is a water department article?
Give it a shot. We, as a Select Board, got involved with looking at water, and it's traditionally, as you said, been the water department. The problem is, the town is going to have to acquire a new parcel, so that is going to be an expense that will be borne by the town, and it runs through the Select Board, so we thought that the free cash was the most appropriate way to look at this.
Oh, Mr. Phillips, could you unhold for a minute? Mr. Schnyman?
I was just looking to make our recommendation.
I'm sorry? I can't really hear you.
I was just looking to make the Finance Committee recommendation.
Did I not ask for the recommendation?
No, you didn't.
Could you just hold on for a minute?
Just one second, be right with you.
I neglected to ask for the recommendation.
Sorry about this. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Six. Thank you.
I would, I would just observe that water security in the future is one of the critical elements of a municipality, and while we have the picture today of how many people use the water system and so on, there's certainly no guarantee for the future. And so my personal view is that water security should be a priority for us, and any way that we can acquire the lands is money well spent.
The first responsibility of a water department to any community is for fire protection. Second, is for clean, safe, portable drinking water for the residents. And third, is an adequate, safe supply of water to meet those needs. Currently, West Newbury has one wellfield located off of Route 113 at the Newport Line, consisting of seven shallow wells, one deep bedrock well with a combined output of 200, 200,500 gallons a day, or 44 million gallons a year. We purchase approximately 20 million gallons of water a year from the city of Newport, putting our total water consumption at approximately 64 million gallons a year. Currently, there are no known plans of any large developments in the town. It could happen, and we would need the additional water to meet those needs. West Newbury bought, had, West Newbury bought its water from the town of Groveland from 1936 until their wells were contaminated in the mid-1970s. That interconnection still exists, and Groveland can still provide us with water, but very limited amounts. The second, there is a second municipal, intermunicipal connection with the city of Newport at our wellfield. We have been using this connection for over 47 years. West Newbury did not have its own water supply until 1991, when we developed the wellfield. The Board of Water Commissioners is committed to finding sustainable source of safe drinking water for the town. There are currently two sites that we are interested in. One is the Dole Place site. Two would be to take a second look at the two wells we have on the Dunn property at the corner of Chase Street and Middle. We also have verbal permission from two, two additional landowners to drill wells on their property. We have no formal agreement with them, but we have a verbal agreement to do so. The Board of Water Commissioners see two possible approaches to the water situation. One, find, buy, and develop a wellsite, provided that it can produce 20 million gallons a year, plus meet all DEP requirements. The cost would be about $13 million, excluding the cost of land. Four million to five million for the building of a pump station and connecting it to the system. Depending on water quality, DEP may require a treatment facility. This would cost between eight million and 10 million. We may not need the treatment plant, but it is best to include those figures so there's no surprises later. Do not develop any site with the intent of selling water. Buy, buy it for West Newbury first. If, at a later date, we find that we can, we can sell water, then do so, but take care of West Newbury first. The second option is do nothing. Stay with the city of Newport and pay whatever rate they, they will charge, knowing that the rate will increase every year. Remember also that Newport and Groveland are facing some big developments that may have an effect on the amount of water that each community can provide for us. Now, also keep in mind that the city of Newport may not be able to stop selling us water, but they can severely restrict what we take. And also, Groveland and Newport's first responsibility as to their own residents, not West Newbury. Funding a new source of drinking water cannot be the sole responsibility of the water department. The department and our ratepayers do not have the financial capacity to, to fund a project by ourselves. We need the town help. And lastly, the Water Commissioners are planning to have a public hearing sometime after the first of the year to discuss water rate increases and possible wellsites. We would like any interested people to attend, you know, or as many interested people to attend as possible. We feel to spend that kind of money, the town must be involved. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. Article Six. I'm sorry? Thank you.
Two noes.
I would recommend that you take your seat, Mr. Baker. It's hard for me to see people that are standing around the side of the room.
I'm making the mo- next motion.
I'm sorry? I can't listen to these people at once.
No, I'm, Madam Moderator, I'm giving the next motion, making the next motion on the agenda.
Have you been recognized?
No, I'm just telling you why I'm standing. I move, Madam Moderator, I moved that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $20,000 for the purpose of engaging professional consultants relative to the FY25 assessing reevaluation, including all incidental and related expenses, with any remaining funds to be closed out to the general account fund balance at the close of fiscal year 2025.
I apologize, this is Article Seven. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Seven.
Is there any discussion? Not all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. The eyes have it. Article Eight.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $10,000 to fund the purchase and installation of police-fire audio recording, playback, and archiving equipment for use by police, fire, and dispatch personnel, including associated training, setup costs, and all incidental and related expenses, with any remaining funds to be closed out to the general account fund balance at the close of fiscal year 2025.
Second. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Eight.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. Article Nine.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $7,400 to fund the purchase and installation of gas meters for use by fire personnel and other first responders, including associated training and setup costs, and all incidental and related expenses, with any remaining funds to be closed out to the general account fund balance at the close of fiscal year 2024.
Second. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Surprisingly, the Fin- Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Nine.
Is there any discussion? Not all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. That one's unanimous. Article Ten. See if the town, I'm sorry. Article Ten.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $12,000 to fund the purchase and installation of a portable speed monitoring trailer and pedestrian safety signs, including associated training and setup costs, and all incidental and related expenses, with any remaining funds to be closed out to the general account fund balance at the close of fiscal year 2024.
Second. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Ten.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. The eyes have it. Article Eleven. There is a, are you making a report?
I am.
There's a report from the Open Space Committee, Ms. Decker.
Hi, everyone, I'm Carol Decker with the Open Space Committee. In Article Eleven, the town's invasive plant working group is requesting $50,000 for professional invasive plant management on town-owned land. This amount includes $40,000 for invasive management work, $5,000 for permitting, and $5,000 for restoration work. If the entire funding amount is not needed for your permitting or restoration, the monies would be redirected to fund additional invasive management work. So, you know, what we're talking about, again, are these invasive plants that are on our town-owned properties. They displace our native plants that many wildlife species depend on for food and cover. They're a threat to the biodiversity, and they can bring down standing trees with the heavy vines of plants like our Asian bittersweet, and they can impact our roadways with, in the case of knotweed, with their very large fibrous root systems. We've had summer interns, and they've removed invasive plants. They've also done mapping the last two years, so we know where the intensive populations of invasives are on our town-owned properties. But we, as volunteers, and even with our town staff, we don't have the professional capability that a professional management company would have. They have the access to tools and the machinery required to remove some of the large woody invasives, such as at our Cherry Hill Reservoir, like the autumn olive trees that are there that are very invasive. And they can also legally treat with herbicide if necessary for some of these invasive that it's the only way to treat. So, should I go on with Article Twelve?
Do you have a report under Article Twelve?
I do.
Do you want us to make the two reports at the same time?
I do.
Okay.
So, for Article Twelve, that's our next one, we're requesting $3,500 to convince, to continue the invasive species intern program that we've had the last two summers. And we're going to rename it the Seasonal Land Stewart Program. It's been a really effective program. I hope you've seen the write-ups in our Open Space page, and even on the Conservation Commission page of the work of the last two summers of, of the two interns that were hired for each summer. They'll continue to support the invasive plant management work, and they will monitor the treated areas that have been done by professionals. They'll hand remove some of the sprouting invasive plants that may come back. And then they'll also help with trail maintenance, trail marking, conservation restriction, and baseline monitoring. We're requesting $3,500. This isn't the full amount. This would cover a month of the expenses in our current budget, and after that, this would become a budget item. So, these are two articles.
You have to go back to Article Eleven to get the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
She hasn't.
She hasn't read the motion.
I make a motion?
Yes.
Are you making the motion?
Yeah. So, Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 to fund the costs of conducting professional invasive species management on town-owned land, including all incidental and related expenses, with any remaining funds to be closed out to the general account fund balance at the close of fiscal year 2025.
Second. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Eleven.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. Article Twelve.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $3,500 to fund the costs and expenses of operating an invasive species intern steward program, which will identify, map, and remediate invasive species on public lands in the town of West Newbury, including all incidental and related expenses, with any remaining funds to be closed out to the general account fund balance at the close of fiscal year 2024.
Second. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Twelve.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $2,430 to fund the payment of unpaid bills incurred during a previous fiscal year.
Second. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Thirteen.
Is there any discussion? Because this requi- this is a expense from a previous year, at least some of it requires a nine-tenths vote, it's unclear right now to me, which may or may not, but to be on the safe side, we'll require a nine-tenths vote on all of these items, so that we'll cover everything that needs to be covered. I'm going to take the vote in reverse order and see if we can get this done unanimously. If not, we'll have to take, we'll have to count the vote. So, I'll ask for the negative votes first. All those opposed to this article, please raise your red card. All those in favor of the article, please raise your green card. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Article Fourteen.
All right, I'm Graham Bachelor. I've got a really long one here, so buckle up, it's gonna be fun. So, I'll give you the, the motion, I'll give you some wonderful ideas after. I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from Community Preservation Act Funds pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44B, the sum of $175,000. the sum of $175,000, with $73,529 from the Open Space and Recreation Fund Balance and $101,471 from the undesignated fund balance, in conformity with the application submitted for the purpose of acquiring a conservation restriction on a portion of the property located at 114 Ash Street, consisting of approximately 14 acres and being a portion of West Newbury Assessor's Map 70, Lot 40, and costs incidental or related thereto, and to authorize the Select Board and/or the Conservation Commission to acquire said conservation restriction by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain on such terms and conditions as the Select Board and/or the Conservation Commission deems appropriate, to authorize the Select Board and the Conservation Commission and/or their designee to apply for, accept, and expend funds from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or other public or private sources to defray all or a portion of the costs of acquisition, including, but not limited to, grants and/or reimbursements from federal, state, or other grants or reimbursement programs in a way connected with the scope of this article, including, but not limited to, funds contributed by Essex County Green Belt Association, which, together with the town, will hold said conservation restriction, and further, to authorize the Select Board, the Conservation Commission, and/or their designee to enter into any and all agreements and execute any and all documents necessary or convenient to effectuate the foregoing, with the remaining funds to be closed out to the Community Preservation Act Open Space and Recreation Fund Balance and the Undesignated Fund Balance in the same appropriation at- proportion as the amounts allocated herein at the close of the fiscal year 2025.
Second.
What is your recommendation, the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article fourteen.
Is there any discussion?
Yes. All right, I'm Graham Bachelor. I'm the Chair of the Open Space Committee as well as a member of the CPC. And I was out at Evergreen on Thursday. I don't know if anyone's been out there, but it's pretty amazing. It's rolling hills. You've got far surrounding it. Ash Swamp is right there. It's really the type of place that makes this town pretty amazing. So, when you see a place like that and the risk of development comes, you have to come up with a plan. And, you know, I grew up in West Newbury, and there were so many places like this that disappeared over and over and over again. And the only thing that we could do was talk amongst ourselves about how sad it was. This is an opportunity where we don't have to do that. We can preserve this parcel, protect this farm, and it really is- it's a great plan. We're utilizing our partnership with Green Belt to take funds that are already designated through the CPA that we can actually protect this farm forever, leverage our dollars, and it's just- it's amazing. I can tell you, when this first came up, I saw the price tag. I said, "I'm not sure how we're gonna do this," and we just got to work. Green Belt has been an amazing partner in this situation, and it's really helped us come up with a fantastic plan. So, we've got a great opportunity here. We don't want to miss it. I think that's it for me tonight.
Is there any further discussion? Not- if not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. The eyes have it. Article fifteen.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend West Newbury zoning bylaw by deleting Section seven, Conditions of Use, in its entirety and replacing it with a new Section seven, including Section 7.1 through 7.9, non-conforming uses and structures as set forth in Appendix C of the West Newbury Finance Committee Report, pages of fifteen through eighteen, dated October 23rd, 2023, and on file and available for inspection with the town clerk, and further, to authorize the town clerk to make any non-substantive- non-substantive ministerial changes to numbering and formatting to ensure consistency with the remainder of the zoning bylaw.
Second.
What is your recommendation, the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article fifteen.
Is there any discussion?
This, in effect, is a way of cutting red tape in town. A number of us live on parcels where there's some non-conforming aspect to the property, and the way it exists now is any change would have to go through the zoning board. With this, the building inspector, we're putting our faith in the building inspector to say that what you're proposing to do on your lot doesn't affect the non-conforming part, and if it's not gonna make it any worse, then the building inspector can tell you, you can go ahead. Otherwise, if it's gonna make the non-conforming thing worse, then it goes the way it does now. So it's a way of cutting red tape in town.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. The eyes have it. Article sixteen. I have made a mistake. That was a zoning bylaw, which requires a two-thirds vote. And there were some no votes, so we're gonna have to count the vote. Will the tellers please come forward? Do we have tellers?
There were three no votes.
Could we have some tellers, please? Okay. Would you come forward? Okay, please vote. Please count this side. If you're not sitting down, your vote won't be counted. If you're not sitting down, your vote won't be counted. From me over. And you can vote that way. Now, remember, the front two are the non-voters.
Is it the front two or front one? Two?
The front two. Okay. All those opposed, please raise your cards and keep them raised until the tellers have gone by. Three against. All those in favor, please raise your cards and keep them raised until the tellers have gone by.
She's gone by. She didn't count two or- You've been counted, too. By the way, it's not even close.
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six? Sixty-three?
Pretty close, huh?
There were 129 yeses and three noes. Article sixteen.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the West Newbury Town Bylaws by deleting Section thirty-nine, Short Term Rentals, in its entirety, and further, to authorize the town clerk to make any non-substantive ministerial changes to numbering and formatting to ensure consistency with the remainder of the town bylaws.
Second.
What is your recommendation, the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article sixteen.
Is there any discussion?
This bylaw was drafted several years ago to deal with a very specific short-term rental situation, and we've found since then that it is flawed and doesn't benefit residents or town staff in trying to implement it. And, in fact, it would have proven to be too difficult to try to revise it in order to make it useful. So, we are recommending that it be deleted, and if there's a need for a short-term rental bylaw in the future that we start from scratch and write into one.
Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. The eyes have it. Article seventeen.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the West Newbury zoning bylaw by revising Section two definitions and by adding a new Section 4.2.4, Accessory Dwelling Units, as set forth in Appendix D of the West Newbury Finance Committee Report, pages nineteen through twenty, dated October 23rd, 2023, and on file and available for inspection with the town clerk, and further, to authorize the town clerk's office to make any non-substantive ministerial changes to numbering and formatting to ensure consistency with the remainder of the bylaw.
Second.
Do you wish to make a report at this time?
Not a report. I can make comments about this particular bylaw.
Well, if you'd like discussion, I-
Thank you. So, I- if there are any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. But this basically gives property owners in town some more rights to have small accessory dwelling units. And there's all kinds of good reasons for doing this, and I think we're being a little proactive. We're a little ahead of the game by proposing this to you. And if you think it's a good idea, I mean, I'd be glad to talk about it if you want more discussion.
Is there any further discussion? This again? Yes. No, Mr. Cook, just take your seat. You can come back up if there's a question.
Hello, Madam Moderator. My name is Diane Teed, and I live at Thirty Way to the River. I recognize the need for alternative housing options in West Newbury, and I strongly believe that the majority of the goals outlined by local housing advocacy groups can be attained. I am in favor of ADUs being located within or attached to a single-family home. However, I am not in favor of standalone ADUs under the current proposed ADU bylaw. My position is based primarily on the following three issues. I oppose the ADU bylaw as crafted, due in part to its broad application. This zoning change impacts every single-family residence in town. It was explained to me that the board arrived at this position because, quote, "It does not see the proposed ADU bylaw as an imposition, but rather an option of adding value for land and homeowners," unquote. I do not see added residential value of this zoning change to the majority of residents. I believe the current proposal might add risk if we have carte blanche building of standalone unit- AD units, ADUs by right. It will have a direct negative impact to some of the abudders' privacy and use of their own property. I believe I am not alone in this position or in this opinion. Residents of West Newbury in an open-space census clearly value the open spaces and rural character of their town. Fully, 85.48% of respondents mentioned space between neighbors as being very important or important. In addition, in tonight's Planning Board FAQ handout, it states on page one, quote, "An ADU is most often created within an existing building, such as within an existing home, garage, or other outbuilding. Thereby, new housing is created without changing the general physical character of a neighborhood and without developing any additional land," unquote. It continues on page two. "We expect the number of ADUs permitted each year to be modest, approximately two to five units per year." I believe these facts further support my argument that the broad application of this zoning change need not be applied to all single-family residences. I believe a path can be created for the few residents each year who want a standalone ADU to elect this option through a separate by-right process where fees could be waived. My second concern is short-term rentals. And I realize that was just discussed in the last warrant. My concern is that we are going along with the Supreme Judicial Court's opinion at this time that there are no short-term rentals allowed. My concern is this could change. And I'm asking that- it is difficult to vote on an ADU proposal unless the town and residents have adopted an ADU bylaw that incorporates a position outlawing STRs in advance. In summary, I believe the most critical and troubling elements of this current ADU bylaw is its broad applicability of standalone ADUs to the zoning for every single-family residence, and the potential threat, not actual, but the potential threat of ADUs being allowed to be listed on Airbnb, Verbo, and similar venues. Finally, I believe there is a way to positively- positively address the ADU issue by providing targeted and equitable solutions. I do not view the current proposal as meeting two go- these two goals for West Newbury's residents. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
So, from what I understand, this can be attached to the house or it can be a standalone, correct? I'm trying to understand.
The way the thing is written?
Yeah, how it's interpreted.
That is what the motion says.
Okay. So, there is a need for housing. I own land in Groveland. I'm having it developed. Groveland is allowed. You can have an addition of 900. They actually very particular, 900 square feet. You can have it and add on, on your property. Many people like it because young people that are moving in, that have a tough time to live in these communities, I've observed that their parents are helping them get into these properties. Some are using them for awpares because they have the money. Others are using them as in-law apartments. It does increase the value of your home. We run a septic system. So, when you want to go over three bedrooms and you want to design a whole new septic system, four bedrooms up, it's a whole different ballgame. So I'm in favor of this because, really, the young people need to get into housing, and their parents are helping them to do it. They're not gonna- they're giving the money now. So I think it's a good thing. It's your personal choice if you want to add on or if you don't. But something has to be done as far as housing. And, you know, the prices, as I said, the price is where it's going. The young people just, you know, they're getting- The young people just, you know, they're getting locked out of the whole situation. So I think as a group, we should help the future of the community and pass this as a way to help the young to get into housing, and that's all I got to say.
Don't anybody take that as an omen. That's...
Mr. Cook, I was recognizing the lady that's behind you first, and I will recognize you when she's...
No worries. Thank you very much. Hi, everybody. Makes me so nervous to talk in front of a bunch of people. Anyway, I just want to say that I've had the pleasure of attending several Planning Board meetings. I got my education, and I got part of an education in what it means to deal with town politics, and I'm really grateful for the Planning Board that we have. I was in particular interested in the accessory dwelling units because my husband and I have three elderly parents in their late eighties, and we have a garage that's unfinished up above, and we were trying to figure out how to either find them someplace to stay should there be an emergency, or even better, be able to maybe provide space for caregivers so that they can be taken care of when, you know, so that we can maybe trade space for being able to take care of our elderly parents. As my husband and I were going through this process, and we're going through this process with three parents at a time, we also realized that now that we're in our mid-sixties, we're actually going to need someone to take care of us, too. And so that was quite an awakening. And so I am in favor, and I can tell you that I've listened to the Planning Board spend a lot of time going through every single detail of this bylaw, and they've done a really phenomenal job, and I'm proud to be part of the community that has them working together. And I just think it's a really, really important idea, and kind of ahead of its time. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to get a little Hallmark-y here. I'm proud to be a resident of West Newbury, and I love our form of government here. And I love the fact that we come forward with, after considerable work, we come forward with what we think is a good bylaw. I'm a member of the Planning Board. And then it's discussed, and there are pros and cons, and a lot, you know, a lot of the concerns are valid concerns, and I'm glad that they're expressed, and then it goes to you guys to decide whether or not it goes forward. With respect to concern about the distance between houses, that would stay the same. The same setbacks apply. Any separate structure that was constructed would have to conform with the setbacks in town. So the distance between dwellings would stay the same as it is now. The, we looked at different ways you can have an ADU. You know, it could be basement, it could be above a garage, it could be a separate thing. In towns where ADUs are required to be connected to the original structure, you get these absurd things, like a little breezeway and a little roof. They're really two separate structures, but somebody's sort of gaming the system. And then there are also existing in town lots of barns, lots of separate garages, lots of separate structures that already exist. And so by allowing the ADU to be in a separate structure, the idea is it provides more flexibility. By making this a by-right kind of a bylaw, it means that you don't have to come to us for a special permit. It's a much more straightforward process. Now, all the other laws apply, as was mentioned by another person who commented. You still have to, you know, have the septic system work. You still have to conform to all the other, the height limitations for structures. I suspect that, you know, and then, you know, you've got to have a place to fit it on your property without... So there are a lot of constraints on it. Even if we pass the bylaw, you still have to make things work. But again, I think this gives more possibilities and supports the community in a whole bunch of different important ways.
As proposed with separate structures, this will basically be an end-around for our zoning laws. Many of the lots in West Newbury are far larger than the zoning. Most of this town is one-acre zoning. Most of the lots are three, four acres. There's plenty of extra space to put on additional houses. I lived in Winthrop for a while. I know what it's like when you put a house in the back of every other house. We moved to West Newbury to avoid that. This zoning bylaw change is against the character of this town because it's going to allow building, I know on my property, I could probably put three or four houses in there. That would greatly increase my value. It would allow me to create all sorts of rental income on my property. It destroys what West Newbury is all about, but this bylaw would give me the right to that. That's not what I want my town to be, and I urge you to vote no.
I personally, I respect your concerns on this. However, you know, there is a housing need, and we do, I just drove by the other day, there's a sign that they got some auction thing from, I think it was McGinnis, and there was a twenty-foot right-of-way, and I go back, and there's a house. So this is already happening. I got a twenty-foot right-of-way, and I got one, an extra one-point-four in West Newbury. I could, I can't because I don't have the frontage, but, you know, this is already going on. You have to look at the big picture, sir. The young people and elderly like to be here. They would, they want to stay here, and it's up to us to do the right thing and give them an opportunity. I mean, really, I hate to say it, but don't be a Debbie Downer in everything here, please. I mean, really.
I think we're getting a little bit repetitive in the arguments. Does anyone have anything new to offer on this? Mr. Cook? Yes?
I appreciate Mr. Baker's concern, but you can't do three or four ADUs. This would allow one ADU only, just one. So I just want to correct that.
Is there any further discussion? Once again, this is a two-thirds vote. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
I feel compelled to let you know that the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cook.
That's okay.
Nothing personal.
Nothing personal, thank you.
Finance Committee approves. This is a two-thirds vote. I suspect we're going to have to count, but I'll try. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. All those in favor, please raise your green cards. Tellers, I need you again. Okay, for the, I noticed that you had a little bit of trouble deciding what the middle was last time, so I'm going to tell you this time, okay? The man in the plaid shirt...
Yes, he's a good middle.
...is on the right. The people who are standing up do not get their votes counted. If you want to get your vote counted, you have to sit there. Okay? So you're going to count this side, and the man in the red plaid shirt, and you're going to count this side.
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Green cards. Did you count the people standing up? Did you?
There was one guy that didn't even have cards, so I didn't count it.
Okay. I'm going to do this again. I get to make the rules. And I said people who were not sitting down would not have their vote counted. If you want your vote counted, just sit down.
Do they take the floor down?
Hmm?
Does the floor count for them?
Yeah, they're sitting on the floor.
I didn't...
They're sitting on the floor, but they're sitting down.
Where are they on the floor?
You can't see them because they're below.
Do you want them in chairs?
Yes.
Yeah, put them in chairs. Put these chairs out for us, mate. The whole bunch of chairs out. We won't be afraid.
Now, anyone who's not sitting in a chair does not get the vote counted, okay? In a chair, okay? All those in favor, please raise your green cards.
Has she come? She's not even coming down here. Yeah, she is. We'll be...
I can't wait. You got to be seated.
Sixty? All those opposed, please raise your red cards. Did you have a miscount? No, okay. Eight? There were one hundred twelve four and twenty against. The motion passes. Article eighteen.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to repeal the Personnel bylaw adopted at the third session of the 1999 annual town meeting in its entirety.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article eighteen.
Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator? I just wanted to explain why we are moving to repeal this. Many of the functions of this bylaw were taken over when we changed to the town manager form of government, so they are either no longer necessary, or they have been moved into the personnel policies that the town has. So this is really a housekeeping item to get rid of this bylaw.
Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. Article nineteen.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section twenty-one A, authorizing the town to pay additional compensation to the assessors in an amount equal to ten percent of their regular compensation for full-time employees, but in no event greater than one thousand annually, and in an amount equal to ten percent of their regular compensation for part-time employees, but in no event greater than five hundred dollars annually, upon attainment of a certificate by the International Association of Assessing Officers as a certified assessment evaluator, or a certificate by the Association of Massachusetts Assessors as a certified Massachusetts assessor.
What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article nineteen.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. The ayes have it. Article twenty.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-one, Section nineteen-K, authorizing the town to pay additional compensation to the town clerk in an amount equal to ten percent of their regular compensation, but in no event greater than one thousand dollars annually, upon completion of the necessary courses of study and training, and attainment of a certificate by the Massachusetts Town Clerks Association as a certified Massachusetts municipal clerk.
What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article twenty.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. It's unanimous. Article twenty-one.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-one, Section one-oh-eight-P, authorizing the town to pay additional compensation to the town treasurer-collector in an amount equal to ten percent of their regular compensation, but in no event greater than one thousand dollars annually, upon completion of the necessary courses of study and training, and attainment of a certificate by the Massachusetts Collectors and Treasurers Association as a certified Massachusetts municipal collector, or a certified Massachusetts municipal treasurer.
What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article twenty-one.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. Article twenty-two.
I move that the town vote to amend section forty of the town bylaws as printed in Article twenty-two of the warrant for the purpose of establishing a revolving fund for the Council on Aging, and further to authorize the town clerk's office to make any non-substantive ministerial changes to numbering and formatting to ensure consistency with the remainder of the bylaws.
Motion.
No. Oh, no. Okay. Yeah, not yet. No, second.
No, she read the motion. She's confused because there's two. The next one says how much?
on Article, the real Article 22?
No, I haven't called for the vote yet.
I'm calling for discussion. Is there any discussion on Article 22? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. Now, Article 23, which is also Council on Aging, okay. So now you make the next one.
Well, motion. I move that the town vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44... I'm going to give up. Section 53E and a half to set expenditure limits for the Council on Aging Revolving Fund at the maximum amount that may be spent during the fiscal year beginning on July 1st, 2023 at $30,000.
What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
On Article 23, the Finance Committee recommends approval.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. Article 24.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to establish a special purpose stabilization fund pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 5B, to be known as the opioid settlement stabilization fund for the purpose of supplementing and strengthening resources for prevention, harm reduction, treatment, and recovery in accordance with the purposes and subject to the requirements in the Massachusetts abatement terms, and that the town vote to accept the fourth paragraph of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 5B, which allows the dedication without further appropriation of all receipts from settlements on behalf of the town with persons and entities involved in the sale, distribution, and manufacture of opioid products.
What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 24.
Is there any discussion? This is also requires a two-thirds vote because it involves setting up a stabilization fund. So let's try, all those opposed, please raise your red cards. All those in favor, please raise your green cards. It's unanimous. The motion passes.
I'm going to return.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please return.